I would like to remind everyone, please make sure your cellphones are turned off or to the off or vibrated position, please. Also, please be advised our city council meetings will broadcast on TV channel 99, Comcast Channel, and rebroadcast on WMGJ Radio. This meeting of the guests and city council will now come to order. The chair calls on Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present. All of our council members are present today, but the meeting is being chaired by President Pro Tem, Councilman Cannon, and I'm going to call on Councilman Williams to lead the invocation for us. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to convene once again. Lord God, we thank you for all of those in the presence and in attendance, Father. Lord God, we thank you for this season. We thank you for the opportunity to say thank you. And we thank you, Lord God, for the opportunity to give thanks for all of the many blessings, Father God. We ask you to touch in a special way those who will deal with the difficulty of family members who are no longer there, Father God. Through it all, Father, we will continue to bless you, give you the glory, the honor, and the praise for thee, Jesus' name. We ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the city council meeting held on November the 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of the account for the week of November the 15th through the 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations. I don't see anyone from the mayor's office today, so let's not have anything. Unfinished business, we have none today. This is a time and place that advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issues for an alcoholic beverage license located at 101 Locust Street in District 3. Being Jake's Music Room LLC has applied for more than a 30-day special retail license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing agreement with FLW LLC. This is for the city to sponsor a tournament to be held on July the 12th, 2014, at Couso Landing, and the amount is $1,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think it's a self-explanatory. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing agreement with Gaston State Community College. This extends the current lease agreement for the use of Doug Parker Park. The soccer field is in the front line of the East Broad Street campus until December 31st, 2014. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think this explains itself too. This is just for another year releasing all that property up there that we have before. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing agreement with Gaston Cell Telco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. This resolution is being removed from agenda to request to the Fire Chief. It is not ready for the council's consideration at this time. Number 13, new business, do we have any?
Yes, Mr. President. I have one item, a resolution authorizing agreement with Saint Associates for surveying services. I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this resolution today.
Sir.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Sir.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
No discussion.
Oh, we ain't discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, this is just an agreement between the City of Gaston and Saint Associates for the surveying services required of a dedication of property currently owned by Grissom Properties LLC and Republic Right Away concerning the Sixth Street intersection on Meagan Boulevard there at the new shopping center. Conveys, conveys the property to the city.
That's all on the east side?
East side, yes.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, we don't want to get to Sixth Street, that mixed up, for sure.
Yeah, this is not the police department.
Okay.
Do we have any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number seven, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any further new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution supporting the citizens' right to vote on whether or not to help allow seven-day sales on alcoholic beverages in the City of Gaston.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for approval, please.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this?
This is simply a resolution allowing, asking our legislatures to allow the citizens of Gaston to vote on the seven-day sales. It's that simple. We're not taking a position too far opposed, but we do think that the citizens should have a right to vote on this issue, and we're encouraging our legislatures to please pass the legislation to allow us to do that.
And I would also add, I would hope that all of our patriotic, God-fearing delegation would give the people the right to decide themselves and not them decide for us. I understand that there might be some hesitation from some of the delegation members who personally have a problem with alcohol. I personally have a problem too, but I don't think I have the right to stop anyone else from exercising their right to vote as to whether or not they want to do. And besides, that's my personal preference, and I'm not here to represent my personal preference. I thought I was here to represent the people, and I hope that they look at it as though they're representing the people and give the people an opportunity to exercise that right, particularly since we have people going to Afghanistan, we have people going who've been to Iraq, we had people go to Vietnam, to die for people over there, for their right to vote. Hopefully, those individuals won't come back here and deny me my right to vote. So I'm asking that delegation to, please, ma'am, and please, sir, let the people in Gaston have a right to vote.
I think, Mr. President, this is an example of the fact that this council is unanimous in its decision to ask for that decision to be made by the people, whether to have seven-day sales or not. The voice of the people is what, it should be heard, and we're asking you to let the people speak for themselves on any issue that is pertaining to their welfare.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any further new business?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I have an item, a resolution authorizing, awarding bid 3253 to Aquaria Marine Enterprise for FEMA-certified safe room shelters, so I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
And that's what, Q, I'm on a discussion. This is some grant monies that were left over several years ago that had been applied for and undoubtedly we're just now receiving those. It's my understanding, and I think we found out upstairs, that none of this money exists anymore, so this was monies that were left over, and I'm not sure why it took so long for them to finally get this together. But anyway, this is a pass-through grant, and it will be going to several communities in the county. No community in the City of Gaston received any of these funds.
Mr. President, we actually need a motion and a second for adoption. We had one for unanimous consent.
Okay, now I make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Now, we just finished discussion. I knew he got ahead of me, but I didn't say anything.
That's okay.
He's in a rush, I believe, today.
I'm hungry.
Any further discussion? Clerk, would you please tell us those addresses where these shelters go, and can you do that for us, so everybody know? I'm sorry I put you on the spot.
That's alright. I will find it momentarily here. 990 Gallant Road in Gallant, 1140 Pulltite Road, and 2040 Macedonia Road.
And these are matching grants, so I'm assuming that they've already spent their monies, and I'm pretty sure this is just a repayment of it.
Any further discussions? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any further new business? There is no further new business. I bring in the Department of Reports, committee boards, etc. Kerry Payne wants to come and speak with us, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's that time of year again, Christmas at the Falls. We had our employee family night last night, and contrary to what Robert said in the pre-council meeting, the weather looked good when I looked at it last Wednesday, and it changed on us by Monday night, but we did have about 40 or 50 employees and family come up last night, believe it or not, and ride the train, and actually walk around some, even in the rain, so we were able to have that until around 6:30, till it rained us out. And I'm hoping that'll be all of the rain for this event. Just to kind of give you an idea, this will be our sixth year to do Christmas at the Falls. It seems like it was just yesterday we took on this venture, and it's, each year, attendance has increased. Last year was our most that we've had come through the park. In 25 nights, we had over 40,000 visitors. So it got a lot of people into the park, a lot come from out of town, and we're going to open up Friday night after Thanksgiving, this Friday night, November the 29th, and it'll run straight through until Sunday, December the 22nd, will be the last night that we have Christmas at the Falls. And just a recommendation for our local residents, try to come during the week if you can, because on the weekends is when a lot of the out-of-town visitors come, and if you come then, you probably will have to stand in line and wait a little while to get in. Usually during the week, there's not really much of a wait, and you can, and you can get in, so that's just a recommendation for our local residents that want to come out and enjoy this event as well. And of course, keep a check on the weather. If it's raining, they, I think in the last, in the last five years, we've probably had maybe five nights out of the whole five years that we could not open up because of weather. So just kind of keep an eye, and if it's raining, you can call the office at Knockalula Falls to check on it. We start pre-selling tickets at 4 o'clock at the gate entry each day, so if you want to come and go in at 5, come a little bit early and go ahead and get your ticket, and then that way you won't have to stand in line to get in, and the gates open at 5, and we quit selling our last ticket at 9:00 PM, and the park stays open till 10:00 each night. Everybody three and under gets in free, and then four and up, it's $5 each, very affordable. We've added some new attractions this year, some new music, some new light shows. Of course, we still have our train ride, you can still get your picture made with Santa, Pet and Zoo's open, and we have letter writing to Santa in the old post office as well. One of the big things that, that we do up there, which is a little bit of additional cost, but we do the cookie decorating. In one of our buildings there, we have cookie decoration and the cocoa stand, and that's very popular for this event as well. And then there'll be some other vendors out front, set up, selling their items. Lookout Mountain Kettle Corn has been one that's been with us for, since we started this, and they'll be there, and then several others, and when you're waiting in line, you can, on the weekends especially, you'll probably want to hit those folks up. And also something new this year, the gift shop is under our management, so we will have several more Christmas items, hopefully for you to purchase, if you want to do a little bit of Christmas shopping in our gift shop this year as well. And also, we started this last year, and this was very popular, especially for our local folks. We partnered with the Cultural Arts Center, and we have a combo ticket that you can buy. So if you want to save a dollar at each, the Let It Snow exhibit that they're doing and Christmas at the Falls, you can buy a combo ticket for eight bucks. So that'll save you a dollar at each location. Use it just whenever those exhibits are open. You don't have to use it on the same night, so, and you can buy those at the Cultural Arts, or you can buy them up at the Falls there at the entry. It won't be the same location as the regular ticket, but there'll be a little trailer setup for you to buy your combo ticket, and that will probably keep you from having to stand in line as well on some of the nights that the line is long. But this, this thing takes, of course, you know, you don't just wake up overnight and have the park decorated. We have some employees in our department, Parks and Rec, that do this. We have two that pretty much concentrate on trying to keep things in working order throughout the year, each year, and then, and make purchases to add to the park, and then we use probably about 25 employees for about four weeks on decorating the park. And then each night, to kind of pull this off and to make this a successful event, we average about 25 employees every night that we have the park open to be able to, to do this event. And I just want to thank the council and the mayor for allowing us to put this on. It's been very successful, and we hope it is this year as well. Thank you.
Carrie.
Go ahead.
Now, I was just gonna say, like I said upstairs, I really believe you look at the weather several months in advance, and the night that the employees have an opportunity to go through free, you schedule it for rain. Five, what'd you say, this is the fifth year?
This will be the sixth.
Sixth year. I think we probably had rain at least five of those times for employees.
I think, I think you're correct.
I know, I am, so. Next year, let me look at the weather and set the date for employees and the city folks to go in.
We'll discuss, we'll discuss.
And Carrie, we'll have a tornado that day. But now, since we had the rain yesterday, and I have to put this little, this little fun, did you go out this morning, because of the rain, did you give all the employees that didn't attend last night a rain check?
Yeah, most of them are up there right now trying to get the lights back on. Yeah, that, they, and seriously, speaking about the rain, when it's raining like it has right now, because I think Andy had his photographer up there last night, and he said, "He got up there about the time y'all cut the lights off." We don't cut the lights off, the rain cut the lights off. So, they'll be, either tomorrow or Friday, we'll have workers having to come in just to get things back up and going for us to be able to open up on Friday night. So usually, a heavy rain like this causes us some, some concerns that we have to, to deal with, but we've got folks that are dedicated, they know what they have to do to come in to get things dried out, to get things to, to work, and so it's been very successful.
But it is beautiful up there.
Thanks.
The city does a good, the park, you all do a good job on that event.
Thank you.
As you do on most events that we have in the city. Thank you.
Thanks.
Q, I was gonna say, I went up last night and took my youngest granddaughter up there, and she really enjoyed what she got to see and do, you know, it was raining pretty hard. We took her up there, she went to see Santa, and that Santa house is really gorgeous, I mean, it is beautiful. And while I hoped she was talking to Santa, when she got through talking to Santa, he looked over at me and he said, "Councilman Cannon, I want you to get all the rest of the council up here, because I'm gonna tell them exactly what they're gonna get for Christmas, the same thing I'm telling you tonight. So if y'all want to know what y'all get for Christmas, see Santa at the Falls, he'll tell ya."
I think it's a lump of coal, isn't it?
I think I already know it.
Thank you.
Rain wasn't good, I'll just put it that way.
Hot, cold.
We have more, Department of Reports, then we have no more of those, we have citizens' requests, bus reports. Let's talk about Edwell County Food Bank.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, first, right off the bat, I need to correct this agenda. The Edwell County Food Bank was last week.
Yeah.
Sometime, I'm so busy, I don't know what I'm doing myself. But today, I'm here to represent the community. Thanksgiving celebration is coming Thursday, well, actually, it started yesterday, cleaning out the convention hall. Today, all the way through Thursday. And just to recap, last year, we served about 4,300 dinners to elders, to shut-in, to the disabled, and to anyone who decided to come by the convention hall and eat. There was meals delivered, so there's no reason for any citizen in Edwell County not to have a decent Thanksgiving dinner and to have companionship for this Thanksgiving dinner. So what I'm doing today is just inviting the council. In my, in my past years of politics, there's no way that I would, this is talking to the elected officials here and throughout. If there was more than five people in any affair, I'd make sure that I would go out and say hello, because those constituents love to see their elected officials. So take time out of your day Thursday just to go by and see the people. Like I said, last year was over 4,000, and we're looking at perhaps 4,000 this year. But just come out this coming Thursday to the community Thanksgiving celebration at the convention hall, be from 10:30 to 2:00 PM, and the best thing of all is F R E E. There's no cost to anyone. Transportation is provided, meals are delivered. The number to call, and it's a very easy number, is 211. At the United Way, this is the first call for help. So whatever your desires are, if you want to volunteer, 211, and give your zip code. Tell what is it that you desire, and for food to be delivered, if you need transportation to the council, to the convention hall, be there. And in today's messenger, you can get more information, United Way First Call for Help with the organizer, this Thanksgiving dinner each year, volunteers, we're still looking for volunteers. Those who would like to be part of this community Thanksgiving celebration could come and join organizers this Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. What we're doing, we'll be chopping vegetables, mixing up cornbread to dressing that has to be cooked. There will be 1,100 pounds of turkey that has to be taken care of, shredded, and whatever has to be done, mixing, the cooking, cornbread dressing, slicing cake, decorating the convention hall. That's Thursday, Thanksgiving Day. Anyone who would like to deliver meals should come to the convention hall by 9:00 PM. Volunteers will be racing all over Cook County to get those meals delivered by 11:00 AM. There will be music served, and somewhat of a nice DJ will be doing music. But I just say, just come by, Councilman, just come by and say hello. Take time out, take 10 minutes out of your day to come by and say hello, because before I got involved in politics, I loved seeing my elected officials saying, "Hey, hello, how you doing?" That's a great, great, great thing to do. So, thank you, I hope we can see you this week, this Thursday, all week, so, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Buster. I bring the standard remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Reed, would you want to go first, please?
By all means. Billy, I got up this morning, it was cold, and it was raining, and I didn't want to get out of bed, didn't want to come down here, didn't want to see y'all. Most of I didn't want to see none of y'all.
Me too, me.
I just would say. And Robert Avery topped that list. But anyway, seriously, I, we were asked to go to the literacy center this morning at 9:00 o'clock, and I did, and I'm gonna tell y'all something. I felt real bad till I got to that place. Four-year-olds, social skills, learning, getting along together, computers, learning how to read and write at four years old, if that won't inspire you, nothing will. I'm glad I got out of the bed, I'm still not glad to see all of y'all, but I damn glad I got over there to see that. That is really something, y'all, if you haven't had the chance to go by there. Isn't that the old even start, Bob?
Yeah.
That's the old even start.
Even start.
And I mean, the decorations in there alone, when you walk in that door, will blow your mind. It was really nice, and I appreciate it. And really, as I've always said, if I've said anything I'm sorry of, I'm glad of it, but I am glad to see y'all.
And we should make up your man.
Well, it's one of those days.
Councilman President Eccles.
I hope everybody has a nice, happy, mass-watering Thanksgiving. And I don't know whether I'll be able to say hello to you or not. I'm not in the best shape right now, but I'm getting better.
Thank you. Councilman Stewart.
Unlike Ben Reed, I got up on the right side of the bed today and just took a little day to be here and see everybody today. I don't have anything other than just to thank Buster and all the volunteers that, that provide that Thanksgiving dinner for everyone, and just, we appreciate all of y'all, Buster.
Councilman Avery.
Yep. Thanksgiving is a great time to be with family and friends, and I'll be with family, and hopefully I'll, and I won't be in town, but I'll be with family, and maybe if I get back in time, I can come and visit some friends down at convention hall, but that's a great time of the year for me, is to reflect, and, and, you know, and I shouldn't even get into this, because it ain't my business, I don't, I don't run those stores, but I wish we would go back to the old traditional shutting down stores on Thanksgiving so the employees can enjoy family. I mean, give us a day to enjoy our families. We've commercialized so much, and I know our merchants downtown and all those folks are getting upset with me, but I don't care, because I think family comes first, and we need to think about that, you know? We got plenty of time to go Christmas shopping or do whatever. As a matter of fact, they start Christmas shopping in September now, which is crazy. Give us that one day, I wish that we would go back to a national shutdown on at least Thanksgiving Day, so we can all give thanks for all the things that happened to us that have been good for us and to us. I think I've said enough about the alcohol sales. You know, I just keep hearing a rumble, and it disturbs me when people in public office take it upon themselves to personalize. If you want to personalize things, then you need to stay personal, but if you're gonna go into public office, you gotta think about who you represent and what you represent. And I have a problem with folks who try to put their morals off on other individuals. You pray for folks, you counsel folks, but you don't legislate. When you start legislating morals and people rights and stuff, you're getting into a very slippery slope, and I would hope that we would have responsible people in public office who would think about things like that, as opposed to coming in with a personal agenda as to what I'd like to see done, or what I want to do. It ain't that way. If you were representing you... If you were representing you, that's okay. But when you start representing the people, then you've got to think about the people. And I did make it back from Seattle, guys, even though the GPS y'all mess with and I was able to stay ahead of the weather.
You didn't check out a spare tire though, did you?
I checked the spare tire. I noticed it had a flat, but we were able to fix that, but I didn't need it. I had, I had a set of good year tires, which was real good, so I didn't have to worry about that. But no, it was, there were a number of good things that happened in Seattle. And the finance committee is going to be setting up a meeting real soon on some teleconference, telecommunications issues that we're going to be looking at over the coming year. I think there's a number of things that are happening, but again, I got, well, no, I didn't get rid of, I started to say that. I'm free from my position, which is, it was nice serving. I think I served a year and a half and normally you only serve a year as a chairman of one of those standing committees for NLC. I was fortunate enough, unlucky enough, whichever one you want to call it, to serve a year and a half. But it was a pleasure being able to serve the NLC for that year, the fair committee. And I think we accomplished quite a bit from a nationwide perspective that also affect us here in Alabama. And people talk about those groups and the meetings and stuff, but policies are set at these meetings, that the national agenda is set. And I'm happy to report that there were only five things that the NLC adopted as their priorities and three of them came out of my committee. So I feel very, very proud of the fact that I served as chairman of that committee. So, again, thanks.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I think, I think, yes, and times I would put Robert on the front page again, he hadn't been on there enough lately. Put those three things that he brought up in there and let him be known. Nobody knows him.
Bob, I want you to, I appreciate that, I want you to understand, I appreciate you. Have you ever seen a rate card for an ad on the front page of any newspaper?
No, they don't have one. You seem to get there pretty, I blame the record. It's a good thing they don't have a rate card.
I'll talk to you after the lead.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a couple items. You know, again, can't speak enough about the community Thanksgiving event at convention hall on Thursday. I've attended every one of those since 1998 and I can tell you that, you know, my parents are a member of New Liberty Tabernacle Appraisers and that's, that's the group that actually originated that event and gave it its identity and of course, it grew so that groups like the United Way were forced to kind of get on board and support what was a very noticeable need in the community. So please go out and support that event. It's one of the opportunities that I take to fellowship with my teenage daughters. We typically go every year and we will deliver meals and it's just, it's wonderful to see the smiles that those girls, they don't particularly care about seeing me, but they're always glad to see those girls deliver meals to them. And so, so again, it's, it's, there's a lot of, it's very fulfilling to be able to deliver a meal. We take for granted sometimes that with the abundance of food that's in our communities, that everyone has food on Thanksgiving. But that's not necessarily the case. Were it not for that meal that those folks get through this event, they may not get a meal that day. So, and they may not have anyone to visit. So, so again, please participate. And I'm just, I'm tickled because the turnout is always amazing. I've seen it grow over the years and the turnout is always amazing at that event. So, so again, just wanted to reiterate, reiterate that point. And just to restate the number, the number is 211. Dial 211 and then enter your zip code. And there's also a phone number in the event that 211's not easy enough to remember for you. There's also a phone number and that number's 256-546-4357. Again, that's 256-546-4357. So again, we ask that everyone participate and support that event at convention hall. Also wanted to remind folks that I will be, that we will be having a community development meeting on December 10th. So that's not next Tuesday, but the following Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. And the intent for that community development meeting is to talk about local banks and their compliance with and their efforts towards complying with the Community Reinvestment Act. I think it's important, as you heard me mention last week, we do a number of good things as it relates to economic development, but sometimes we miss the opportunity to try to grow small business. Small business is probably one of the key job creators in this country and that's just not a national truth, that's a truth locally as well. So, so again, we want the banks to come out and talk to us about what they're doing and what they plan to do as it relates to the, that law, that federal law and how they're complying. And again, that'll be next, that'll be Tuesday, the 10th of December at 9:00 a.m. The weather, there are a couple of things that come out of the weather being the way it is. I heard someone speak, speak to it earlier, but we came very close to raining out the council meeting today. Not quite, but we came pretty close to raining out the council meeting. But also what comes out of the weather being the way it is today is that you get an opportunity to see where your flooding issues are. You know, that's good or bad depending on your perspective, but you get a chance to see where your flooding issues are. And with that, you know, I want to bring up North Gadsden Park because there historically has been an issue with flooding at the North Gadsden Park. So I just want people to know that that is on the radar for sure. Chad is doing some, and the engineering department is doing some great work and evaluation to see what our options are going to be in terms of alleviating that flooding issue. And there'll be more information to come as it relates to that. And the last thing I have is I want to wish everyone, everyone a happy Thanksgiving. You know, please enjoy the time with family. Councilman Avery spoke to it earlier. Please enjoy the time with family and please be sure to take the opportunity to visit with someone who typically won't get any visitation that day because again, that's as important as the meal, I think. That's it.
Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'll start in the reverse order that Councilman Williams just finished. Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving this holiday, I want to wish everyone a very, very meaningful and family-oriented Thanksgiving. I hope that you will enjoy, take this time and enjoy your families and friends because I think this is probably the most family-oriented holiday that we ever have and that is the Thanksgiving season. But at the same time, I want you to eat plenty, you know, have fun, you know, enjoy it. But at the same time, some of you all may remember the old song, "Count your many blessings, name them one by one, count your many blessings, see what God has done. Count your blessings, name them one by one, count your many blessings, see what God has done." So while you're eating, take time to give thanks for the blessings that you have received. In relation to, in relationship to flooding, Stroud Avenue should not have any water standing today after the project that our engineering department has provided us with over there. We have, in the joint project between the city and the county, they have, we have relieved the flooding problem on Stroud Avenue and we are very grateful and thankful for that project. It's nearing completion. They have a few small issues to wrap up, but it is nearing completion. So, but then, as I rode down coming to council meeting this morning, this is not ours, Chad, but George Wallace Drive has had water standing halfway out in one of the lanes, you know, so that continues to be a big problem for us as we commute from that side of town to downtown. The Springfield Avenue Bridge, you didn't call it a bridge, Chad, what'd you call it?
Cover.
Cover. Springfield Avenue cover is in place. The gravel has been put on. They'll need about two weeks for settlement, for the gravel to settle and then they will come in and put the surface on it. So that, you know, we're saying two to three weeks, that project should be completed. The, Rob and I'll go back to once again, you know, our issue with our legislative delegation allowing the people in the City of Gadsden to vote. Now, we have passed the unanimous resolution here in the City of Gadsden, the city council. The supervisors, the county commissioners have done the same thing. Lisa has provided information to those persons who are seeking some ridiculous information just to give you the right to vote. They want information that I don't deem necessary to give you the right to vote on an issue. But, you know, they've asked for it and now we'll see what will be the excuse for not putting this into the legislature and letting you vote for the way you want to vote on that issue. Stroud Avenue, and I said, I'm sorry, Litchfield Middle School is progressing well. The parent teacher organization out there under the leadership of Mrs. Deraymus is moving forward. And if you are, if you have ever been connected with Litchfield School when it was a high school, or you're an alumni of that school, please contact Ms. Deraymus to see what is it that you can do to help us continue to guide that school in the right direction with the help. They aren't the only ones that are doing it, but the community, the faculty, you know, PTO, all must come together to make sure that we're doing what we need to do for that school. So we appreciate, it is appreciated what you have done to this point, but we want you to also be involved with it much more. We have several members of the chamber here today with us, Ms. New, Ms. No, Mr. McClendon, the incoming president. And I just want to address one more issue and that is 759. Most of you read, perhaps may have read the article in the paper this past week where, let's see, they are wanting to add a no build option to 759. I promised, I promised I would not get off 759 until I can't breathe or can't speak anymore. We need 759. Now, if they put that no build option in there, you know what that means. We will not build. 759 will never come into existence. No build means no progress. If we don't complete 759, our, the progress, progress that we're trying to make in Gadsden comes to a dead halt and creates and continues to create more gridlock and hamper industrial development and everything else in the city. So you're going to be hearing, and I'm appealing to the citizens of Gadsden, citizens of Edwall County, to pay attention to what's happening. And when you hear of the upcoming events that you're going to be hearing about in the very near future concerning meetings and invitations from our state government to come and join with us so that we can express, you can have the opportunity to express your feelings about that issue, please be aware of the fact that we need your support. We need your support so that we will not put this, we will not let the state of Alabama, the governor or anybody else take 759 completely off the table. We need your help to make sure it stays there. And I'm looking forward to participating in any events that we have with all of our legislatures, the governor and everybody else, senators from Attahokee, you know, and all the rest. We want them to be initially, we're really, not initially, but involved in the opportunity for us to move forward in the City of Gadsden. Thank you.
Councilman Avery.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody real quick again about the leaf pickup. We did discuss that upstairs. I do have some issues and I wanted the folks to know that we did discuss those issues. But now would be a perfect time to hold up on spending $90,000 on some pickups and buy some bags if this council would go on record as supporting bagging leaves. I just had to bring that up one more time. You won't have any flooding, so you won't have to worry about the gutters being stopped up.
Due to the Thanksgiving holiday this week, Thursday's garbage truck will be collected tomorrow and Friday's route will not change. Do I have a motion to adjourn?